Good afternoon. This is Tuesday, July 13th, and this is the work session of the Board of Supervisors on the American Rescue Plan Act. And for right now, I guess we're going to go through any updates on information gathering that anyone has. And I'm happy to kind of start out, at least with the financials here, a little bit. I got this from Lisa Markley, since she is of the office. Just going over that she's going to work on a budget amendment that will be done in August. Some of the restoration, or some of the areas that should be moving dollars to apartment number 99. And then her and I have worked on last week to get all the information submitted to the U.S. Treasury to be able to pull down our first installment of dollars. That's a process to go through. I wasn't expecting that much, you know, we already had the Dunne's number of all the additional information need, but we have that taken care of. The Treasurer's Office was notified, and our Treasurer's Office was notified, so they knew the most dollars would come in. But they did say the process could take like four or five days, or four or five days for approval, so I didn't know if that meant, I'm assuming it meant four or five business days. So that's what that status is right now. Our ISAT group will be meeting again next week. I was thinking it was this week, but it's next week that we are.
It is the week.
It is, I think it is on Wednesday, but let me pull it up real quick.
This will be after our next meeting.
Yep, it's next Wednesday at 11:00 in the morning. But we're meeting. And then I'm also have been reaching out to the various mayors and communities. I have a meeting tomorrow and a meeting next week. Several of them haven't even started yet, or they just started having, introduced it to their council members to look at. Some of the other communities, still very generic, it hasn't been all brought before the board necessarily, so still an early process, but many of them are looking more at infrastructure projects such as sewer, storm sewers, water, other water lines. That is kind of where they're, where I'm seeing a number of, that's where the communities are kind of focused on. But as I said, I've not reached out, or I've not, I've reached out to them all, we just haven't been able to connect up because of their work schedule, mine. Even just trying to connect by phone, said phones, in-person, whatever kind of work. So hopefully we'll have all of that connected by next week.
Do you want to go ahead?
I can.
As you heard earlier today, we had a meeting late last week with our Internet fiber service providers, our telcos here in Story County, Huxcom, Stratford, Regional, Minerva Valley, and Colo. And they all have some interest in doing, in going for the part of the $100 million that the OCIO is going to be granting out. They all have a presence here in Story County now, provide service, and our local service providers have a pretty good reputation in terms of customer service, which I think is important for us to look at. It's also iron ore money, so I think it's important to work with people who already are providing services here and are accessible to customers if there's concerns. Right now, I did some follow-up calls today, and it's really going to vary quite a bit in terms of the tiers that the OCIO map has shown. Meeting service, you know, having maybe under 25, down speed, under, you know, various tiers, tier ones, two, and three. I think they're looking at just going for those now. There's a possibility of challenging this new map that the OCIO put out. It's the one where they work on census blocks, and if there's one person in the census block that has service, they consider the census block covered. But what they've decided, I think probably to a person, is the grant deadline of July 28th just does not give them time to put together challenges. Also, even though we got a lot of, got a lot of replies on our surveys, we got over 1,000, still when you're looking at the number of customers, you know, that might be not a lot. And so they're saying they really can't put together grants right now on areas they don't have enough data to challenge. But there's another option we've been talking about, which is there's going to be another $100 million next year if the legislature, I mean, they didn't, we have annual budgets, but if they look at that commitment that they made this year, and what the governor recommended, we could look at some of those areas that we know from our study and act totally are underserved, and we could get customer challenges, residents can challenge. And that takes some time, but there's some places where we could work with homeowners' associations, we could work with some other groups, and maybe have, get some challenges going, so that next year the map might look a little different for a couple areas that we know in our county are not well served, but the OCIO doesn't agree. So, but here's what I'm thinking on this. I've asked them if they want letters of support to send them to me. Might not have them until very first thing Monday, so I might be putting them on the agenda, you know, just within the 24-hour notice. They're also getting the numbers on who they're going to, on the projected number of customers and their estimated budget, and I'll bring forward some kind of a recommendation on letters of support and possible cash matches. But we really should, if possible, deal with it next Tuesday, because their deadline is the 28th, and next Tuesday's the 20th. So they, I have one more person to talk to, but I don't think it'll be a problem getting the information, so I can have it on the agenda. So, but we, but what that brings up to me is just thinking about this, there are maybe some things that we're really interested in, that we want to consider using this rescue plan money for, which, like this, have deadlines, and we may not, it's just starting to be more and more, we might not know the entire picture, but have to start, be having to start make some decisions. And that, you know, that's going to be kind of, so I guess the sooner we can have some real numbers on some of these things, the better. You know, I know we both talked about doing a spreadsheet, I had to start one, I don't know if you guys.
I started it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'd be willing to help on that if there's any way I can, or if it's just better with having one person do it, I can certainly, that's certainly fine with me. But I think, you know, if we can, you know, in a few weeks, if we're able to just kind of look, you know, have some more ideas of what some of these things that we're talking about might cost. The other thing I had been working on, I saw Brenda Dreyer again, because I introduced her to some potentially new customers for their workforce training. And we talked, and she said she had a meeting yesterday with DMAC to see where they were going with that, with that program that had been, had been under the Future Road Iowa Grant, and that's, that's ending this December. Well, they, they spent their local match on the grant they have now, and they've got a few thousand that will keep them going through December. So we've got a little bit of time on that one, you know, and it wouldn't hurt if, you know, the program didn't go for a month or two, but still, it's one that there's, they're getting more interest in, so I personally be hoping, hoping we could consider that one in the fall. That's all I have right now. We have a list from Conservation that I received before, and I think we've got a list from their quarter now. So, is Stacy on, yeah, she is. Can I ask her a quick question? Stacy?
Yep, I'm here, go right ahead.
Afternoon.
Hi.
On your email you sent us, you talked about it would cost 950 per book, and then you've got a whole bunch of books listed.
Mm-hmm.
And you, and you don't have to do it right now, but can you give us an estimate of what the total would be? And also maybe your timeline, would you do them all at once? Would you space that out over a couple of years, or, you know, so we know, you know, when monies would be necessary if we were to say, yeah, we could use rescue plan funds for this?
Sure, so there is roughly 103 books, so I did the quick math, and it was about $97,850. You know, I could space this off, or space this out, and it really would, would depend upon vendor timeframe as well, working with, I would assume we would work with the same vendor that we've been working with, with the Auditor's Office for the historical online index, so, but I can certainly gather some more information. I apologize, this was kind of thrown together last night, or yesterday, and Lisa was out, so I was looking for a little more information, but I hope this is, this gives you some information to start with.
Certainly does. No, that's, that's good, having that number. Now, this is separate from what the Auditor's Office is doing now.
Right. I believe the Auditor's Office was working on the Minute Books, is that correct?
Right.
Right. I, I think that's through a different vendor, but they have, they've done some back scanning with the transfer books, those large books in their workroom, that we share all that information that's provided on that, on an online historic index website that you can click on, and it's just like you standing in our library going through the books, so it's really, really, really helpful.
So does anybody know, is the, is the Auditor's Office, do they have funding in, I'm trying to remember, did we fund that in FY '22, it's already funded, what they're doing?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I mean, I was thinking we did, but does that cover all of what they were doing?
I'm sorry, I don't know. I think it was through, was it Arca Search, is that?
Well, we can check on it. Yeah, we can check with her on that. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for the questions.
Yeah, I had done a quick thing on Stacy's as well, I actually came up with 106 books, hers was 103. But you may be right, I may have double counted, you know, when I was adding up, I initially came up with 124, so.
That's okay. We, at least we have a ballpark, you know, and that, that number is, it's just depending on, you know, the type of book, if the book is fragile, you know, if it comes apart, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but ballpark is about 950, so.
And I just took that 950 times 106 and came up with about 100,000, almost 101,000 initially, give or take and stuff. As you said, it's all dependent on the status of everything else on there.
So do we, we've got something from Conservation Recorder, what other in-house, in-county government do we have?
We had, on this, on that list was the HVAC, the McFarland Restoration, the Hickory Grove Septic, Permanent Barriers from General and Capital Funds to the Arca Fund. He's getting new estimates on that, too, to get updated, so he's getting updated figures.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Sandra and I got the survey sent out, the preliminary results came back, the top three things were increased homelessness, lack of access to technology, and technological literacy were the three. Yeah, I, we were both surprised that technology was one of the top three. At first it was the top one for a while.
Was lack of technology and technology literacy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next steps are trying to get a meeting scheduled with the centralized intake partners to talk about what the anticipated need is going to be, immediate need is going to be, and then talking about also long-term, what type of safety nets can this funding be used for. I also talked with Vanessa at the city, and she brought up the point that, because I had checked with the clerk of court, and the clerk's office said they didn't really have pending evictions, that like they had maybe, at that time she said she thought they had maybe two. And I was talking to Vanessa about that, and she made the point that leases are up this month, a lot of them are up this month, and that possibly what's happening is they're just not getting renewed, rather than people actually being evicted. So, yeah, so I thought contacting the landlords in the area just to find out what, where they're at, like how many people do they have that are behind on their rent payments? What, how much are they looking at? How many of them have applied for assistance through the emergency rental assistance program through the state? How many are still waiting for that? So that's, that's on the list of things to do. Last time we talked about the housing trust. The housing trust would be a sub-recipient if we worked with them to manage the funding. It would be, they would be a sub-recipient, and then they would be granting out the funds. So, and that was not, I was not really clear on what that would look like if we worked with them. I don't know that that's what we want to do, like add one more hand for the money to be passing through, which brings me back to talking about a grant manager to handle all of the different programs we may end up funding eventually.
So individuals would apply for assistance directly to our grant manager?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily. I mean, we, we, we would still be looking at working with agencies, but the housing trust would also be looking at working with agencies. So agencies that provide services would apply for a grant through the housing trust, and then the housing trust would, the money would just be passing through, if that makes sense. So individuals would apply to, like, like Good Neighbor, for example. Someone would go to Good Neighbor and say, I need help. Well, Good Neighbor would have already applied for whatever grant we decide to offer. Good Neighbor would have applied to our grant manager instead of to the housing trust.
Okay, so would you see using that grant manager for things other than housing, for like all the monies we put out?
Yeah, yeah. A person to, that that's their job, is to manage these funds, manage where they're going, make sure that all of the i's are being dotted.
Okay. So I have a question, so in your kind of scenario, that if money went to the housing, what you're saying is planning to the housing trust fund, agencies would apply for funds through them to then disseminate to folks, is what you're looking at?
Yeah, and that's why I was thinking, I don't know if that really makes sense for us to do it that way.
Oh, versus just individual folks applying for funds? I must be missing something in what you're trying to explain here.
If we had, to go through the housing trust, we would basically be saying, here's the, here's this money, we would like it to be used for this thing or these things, and the housing trust would then accept applications from agencies, and so the housing trust would be issuing grants out to agencies, which is exactly what a grant manager here would be doing.
I get what you're saying, okay.
I mean, we could still, we could still direct some funds to the housing trust for, you know, affordable housing projects or something like that, but to really be the funnel for any of those housing needs, I didn't think that that made sense.
But it would, kind of doubles down, it would make sense if, to do this work, you needed expertise in housing. You know, if we're just, if we're saying, we're going to hire ourselves one grant manager, and they're going to manage all of this, they're going to be managing a very, very wide spectrum of things, and they not have very much knowledge of any of them. So that, you know, that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't know. I think it almost depends on where, what we decide to do with the money, what kind of an approach we take, but that is an option, yeah.
Yeah, I think last time we had talked about that the housing trust does owner-occupied repairs, and will also help with deposits for rental, rental deposits, and there are several different programs that the housing trust offers, and.
And do they have the capabilities of managing funds for all of those things in Story County?
No, I don't believe so. Like if we just said, here's all the money that we, we want to have go to.
Housing-related needs?
Yes, no, they do not.
Okay. So I think the question would be, what would they need, what type of, what would they need to be able to handle that? So I get what you're saying of having that grant manager, but if we, I'm not saying gay or nay to that, because I just think we're kind of early in the conversation of it, but if we were kind of the expectation that they would take on that role, what other additional support would they need? Do you, do you know?
I don't, I'm guessing there would be more staff.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm guessing that's what it would be. But then that, I mean, that led me into a conversation with, with Andrew about the Septic Systems and funding for that, so that, it was a good, it was a productive conversation. And then, so back to the surveys, Carla is helping us develop the survey for households, similar to the one that we sent out for social service agencies. And, and then we've been talking with some of the schools to see if they would be willing to send that out to their families. And so far, the response has been positive, so I'm hoping once we get that done, we can get those out to families.
Is there going to be paper survey or online survey?
I would think both, but through the schools it would be all electronic.
Okay.
Because they don't really do paper anymore. We, I feel like we've talked about a lot of things in all of our conversations. The Wi-Fi access is one of the things that, that is mentioned in the survey and that we've been talking about. How do we, how can we expand access to Wi-Fi services around the county? What, what that might look like? I don't know, I don't know if it would, I don't know what that would look like. We also talked about the, the training program, the work training program, upskill, upskilling, and Carla made the suggestion of possibly offering a stipend to people who are participating in the program. And we talked about, today we talked about rent subsidies and childcare subsidies to go along with that program. How do we bring people from outside the county in, and build our skilled workforce at the same time? And then we also talked about the need for a community center of some sort, or emergency shelter. We've got, we've got the bridge, but they're not really set up to be the emergency shelter. Or we, or have the staff maybe it is to handle those emergency shelter folks. So we talked about what would a, what would an alternative or additional center or service look like? I don't know.
So would this be folks that are, talk a little bit more on that, when you talked about having a community center or shelter, assuming for adults is what you're looking at?
Yeah.
I'm assuming not necessarily homeless, or what?
Not necessarily homeless, yeah. But one of the survey responses mentioned that one thing that we don't seem to have is, is just a place that people can go who don't have access to, to the Internet, or don't have access to air conditioning, or, and we have the library, we have lots of different places, but.
Sure, my day center.
An additional.
Day drop and center.
A day drop and center, but also, but also additional emergency housing shelter. What that, what that would look like, what, what partnerships might look like. Like I said, we, we've been talking about a lot of things, and at first it was like, okay, well, here, we're, we're going to update these three things, and then finally it was just like, well, we're supposed to be brainstorming, so, so I just thought I would just share all the things that we've been talking about. The other thing is, it, I would, I would like us to identify an amount that we would be comfortable just designating for emergent needs to help the folks who may be out on the street at the end of this month. Not, and not limited to that amount, because, you know, we might find out later down the road that we need other funds for other types of housing needs, but when, so, like when we meet with centralized intake, it would be nice if we could sit down and I could say, this is how much we're working with roughly. What do you guys think people are going to need? How do we use, how do we use these funds to help the people who are unhoused as of
Thinking, I'm thinking process, what day it is today.
Well, I think the question of, would your discussion go around, what if you have 50,000? What would that, what would that, you know, how many could that potentially cover if you had 25,000 or 100,000? Because then you get kind of that general idea within those dollar, I mean, could be more, could be less, but at least you get kind of a, an idea where is, where is that at? Yeah, I don't know what the numbers will be come August, or even in September, if we'll be able to tell as early as August as to how many people don't have.
Right.
Housing, you know, they might be in the process of, okay, I have to be out here, but I will have a place. okay, I have to be out here, but I will have a place. Maybe not August 1st, but I've got August 3rd, you know?
Right.
Just, so we just don't have that data.
Right. And there, and there are lots of different parts to that. I mean, there are a lot of people with a lot of back rent. That, and that's not something that I think we would, we need to deal with right now. Like these people who are potentially going to be in their car, sleeping in their car. What, what? Yeah.
Okay, I have two questions. Is anybody comfortable giving a ballpark number of the number of people or families that are in danger?
I have not gotten one yet. I'm, I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping after getting some information from landlords, talking to centralized intake partners to see, what are they seeing? I have a, an email out to Legal Aid to see what kind of numbers of people are, are they seeing, coming to them for help to give us a better idea of.
So you might have some kind of a ballpark by next Tuesday.
Oh, I'm hoping so, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then the second question is, what would we be looking for? Because next Tuesday's 20th. If we were going to do something, we probably need to get it on the agenda for the 27th for board meeting. And we haven't really talked about process for making decisions yet, but we're pushing up on it with this. I assume we're talking about a very short term solution, an immediate solution.
Yes.
What is the short term solution? Hotel rooms?
I don't know. That's, that's the, that's the conversation I'm hoping to have with the centralized intake partners.
Okay.
What, what would this, because they, I mean, they're the ones that do the work.
Yeah, because if we had a ballpark number, I mean, even if it's just, I mean, nobody's going to hold them to it.
Right.
Just a planning number, a ballpark number, a short term solution, what's it going to cost? What is immediate short term solution? What is short term? Then we could start working on a dollar figure.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Yeah, yeah. And I would assume when you're talking with the centralized intake as well, is, as you kind of mentioned, Linda, about, you know, we're looking at hotels or whatever. Are we looking at like the Motter 6 Hotel? I think it's Motter 6 off of Lincoln Way. Are we looking at like one of the other hotels? Do they, you know, with different activities that are picking up more? What is their capacity as well?
Right, yeah.
And, and the bridge home, do they have, what capacity do they have? And, you know, through, you know, what, how many people might they need? Do, might they be able to accommodate? If, if the, you know, bottom falls out on people August 1st? So start with that, I would say, because those are existing beds that can be accessed and then say, well, then where do we go? If it, you know, goes past that? Yeah. And we could talk, we could review it next Wednesday and then it could be on the agenda for the following, which is the 20th in the afternoon meeting like this. Then we could have it on the agenda for the 27th. And we would know that that was not a final, this is all we're going to do about people who are unhoused. But this is something that we can, we can respond to a problem fairly quickly and adjust as needed.
I think the question that we'll also go to is, how is the money being distributed so that we can track? We can track that as well.
Good.
Can I go back to the Wi-Fi? You're talking about free Wi-Fi for people who can't afford?
I, I was really, I was thinking hotspot locations. Not necessarily, you get free Wi-Fi, you get free Wi-Fi, you get free Wi-Fi. But in, in the communities, where could we create hotspots? Where there aren't, where there isn't access right now?
How much do the libraries offer right now?
You mean, how many hotspots are they, are they checking out?
Or just having to go to the library to get on the internet?
Asking the question again. Sorry.
Don't they have, don't the libraries have free Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Yeah. So how many, do all the libraries, is that, you, does that?
I don't know if all the libraries have.
Yeah.
Wi-Fi.
So some of the need is, has been met throughout the pandemic by some of the libraries.
And then are you talking about portable hotspots?
They might look like that. I was thinking businesses that either expand their Wi-Fi access or could have a hotspot there. I don't know. And yes, the libraries were addressing some of the need. But one thing that came through loud and clear on the survey was that there were still people who did not have access.
Okay.
So how do we expand that?
And the reason they didn't have access was?
Well, that I don't know.
Okay. I guess I need to know more, just to think of, and to think of a solution that's going to work. I, I want to know more about that.
Yeah, because I'm kind of thinking, you know, some businesses that you go into, like some coffee shops, you can tap into their, their Wi-Fi when you're, when you're there. If you're looking at like a portable, like a checkout, like a hotspot type thing, if you're expanding on that, those generally are under contract and have like monthly, you know, was that what you were looking? I, I don't, I don't know.
I wasn't, I wasn't looking at anything specific. I was just sharing what we.
Right.
Back and then just kind of kicking ideas.
That'd be a question on the survey that goes to individuals.
Yeah, that would be helpful, yeah, as where they.
Yeah, to get delved into it more and say, why don't you have access? Is it because you can't afford to get broadband or any internet service in your home? Or is it because you're, you're out in an area where it's just not offered or something else? Leanne, did you have something? You were looking like you had some.
Conservation can't advertise for the park facilities.
I've not heard that.
I know that was an idea that was discussed years ago. Like conceiving Tedesco. It'd have to be carefully crafted.
Yeah.
Because that's what I was thinking, so wireless.
Yeah, I think one of the state parks that we've camped in has had, has wireless.
What I'd be really kind of interested in, you know, is a solution that could solve more than one need. And I think you were kind of alluding to it earlier. People who don't have a place to go. And I was thinking, that's why I said, a day, like a drop in center, that could be a cooling center, it could be Wi-Fi, there could be Wi-Fi there. It could be a meal site, you know, something like that.
Right.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah. That, that might be the kind of thing that would take some time to think through. And if we had a model and had some interest in it, we could kind of even put up, you know, requests for proposals or something like that. If we, but I'm, I get stuck back then on identifying the need and I get into numbers real quick. It's how do we, you know, we could hear anecdotally this, but it's, it's getting to the numbers and where the numbers are. Because transportation becomes such an issue then.
Right, right.
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 But no, I'm, I'm supportive of us looking at, at what we could do on a short term and medium basis. Unhoused folks.
Okay, any additional information at this time?
Do I need anything else, Samuel? Did I miss anything? Was there anything that, just the young people that we talked about? Maybe gladness I've been for them to work somewhere and add to their, their household finances.
Can you, I can't hear you.
For young people to be able to work and earn money and then add to their household finances. Yeah, so the apprenticeship question that I asked earlier, I was thinking more like high school partnerships between high school students and different businesses. Those types of mentoring apprenticeships where we're really growing our, our workforce by getting them into some of those workplace situations, getting them some experience, helping them possibly earn some money while they're doing it and supporting their household that way. Yeah.
Their larger school districts have.
That's what I was thinking.
Ames does. I don't, I don't know who it is in work. I think she should be in a different position. But they, I don't know.
We have a work study.
In, in it is that they're not a community working. It's more of a, it's in their business department.
Yeah, yeah. Ames had something like that when my daughter was in school. But it wasn't really a partnership between certain, it was as long as you have a job and you're going to your job, great. It wasn't really a tool that could be used to get kids some training in, you know, specifically, like, do you want to work in administration? We can show you here, like you can come and work here, learn what does an office really do? Like really kind of mentor you through that process so that at the end of this class or this time period, you've got something, real work experience to put on your resume. Not that other jobs aren't real work, because they are, but professional, more professional work for your resume. You've worked multi-line phones or, you know, just something more structured.
I thought, I thought maybe, or at least when I was in years, the education I was in for my 10 years. I thought the schools did that, where it would be more that training to get them, not just any job, but really focus in that area. But.
Leanne's got something up on the screen. What's this about?
And I can send you some links, like Nevada, they have a welding apprenticeship program. We have, starting a restaurant, consumer, now it's not a restaurant, food service apprenticeship program, I think. I know Boone, City of Boone has an apprenticeship program with Fairway or Archway. There are a lot in the Story and Boone County area, so I can send the whole listing. But then.
Great.
It's definitely work-based learning is a key, key component that many of the local school districts are embracing. But I, I can, I'll reach out to our assistant superintendent, see if he has a whole list.
Are the schools getting rescue plan money that they could use to strengthen some of those programs?
I, I don't know if schools will use the rescue plan money for those programs or for.
Infrastructure.
No, for loss of learning.
Okay.
Learning loss. I mean, that's the big gap.
The money that they've lost, no.
Okay.
Loss of revenue, in other words?
Yeah, but really the, the learning gap is astronomical.
Gotcha, gotcha. With the kids lost in last year, how they do remedial stuff.
But this is great because then we can figure out what, what the need, what type of support these programs.
Yeah, and so it's like in the welding program, it's a partnership with DMAC. And I can give it all the program right by now. As a, I think as a junior, maybe even sophomore, a student can choose that path. They'll go into the welding apprenticeship program. And it's potential when they graduate high school, they'll be guaranteed a job with a local business. They'll have the welding, welding skill set, but then have a certain, I think they have one more year that through DMAC and they have their associate's degree as well. And so the first year is totally paid for at the local level by the school district too, for the program. And I know, yeah, Ames has programs and I'm actually in Falmouth as well.
And I think some of them even have more healthcare. Does Nevada do the healthcare one?
We have a CNA, we do a CNA through, through DMAC. There's, there's a part.
Anything else? I think we'll have more information by next week's meeting as well.
Yeah, I have a feeling we're, we're getting closer on some of these things to actually say, yes, we can do, you know, this is useful. Now with the broadband, we might be putting some money out there that doesn't get taken up on because somebody might not get an OCIO grant. But there's going to be another round of grants hopefully next year. So, and there's going to be other ways to help support broadband. There might be some other ways to, you know. And look at the Wi-Fi issue. I'm just thinking about that. Maybe it's support. Okay.
All right, so next steps? I mean, I have a simple, good information. Have it at our meeting next week. May even have something to be on an agenda. What, next Tuesday or the following Tuesday?
I think, I think that, well, for broadband next Tuesday and maybe the, the workforce one, workforce training, there's no real hurry on that. We could get the proposal and hold on to it for a little while. The broadband and the eviction or two that we probably would need to move on pretty quickly. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, eviction before the end of the month. I think we can do all of those, get those moving.
Okay. And I have, what, next Tuesday down for a meeting date? Because we kind of decided.
Latifah, can I ask a question? You're getting surveys out to individuals, is that through agencies? How are you going to get that distributed?
Through the combination of agencies, schools.
Okay. Our website. Yeah, the, I know the broadband survey, we did a, I mean, we had that out for a couple of months and we even extended that. And we did lots of things to call attention to that. Got a couple of articles, like three articles in the Tribune, had it in the Sun a couple of times. You know, that might be something, I, I don't know if you want to consider that as well as, you know, our website and our Facebook and all that. It seemed like whenever we got something, of course, it was rural, but it seemed like whenever we got something into the Sun, that following weekend kind of spiked in terms of the number of surveys that came in. So, you know, follow-up, I think it's, it's real tough sometimes, you know?
Yeah.
I think of the surveys I get and what percentage of them I do. And, you know, I just, I, you know.
Yeah.
Are, are you going to also, on that survey, know what part of the county somebody lives in? Are you going to try to get some kind of geographic thing?
That's a, that's a good question.
So you know if it's an Ames problem? If it's a problem Collins or a problem in McCallsburg? I mean, that's, that's one thing I think if you're. Yeah, I would.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point.
Try to do that somehow.
You just ask for their city of residence.
Yeah, you may have something on there too because you'd need some way of telling you if they're in this qualified census tract area.
Booed. How do you do that without asking for an address and going through all that?
That's They don't have to be in the qualified census tract area. It's just a deal because then we don't have to justify it.
Link it to pandemic.
Yeah, that's the other thing, like we have to make sure that we can
Justify.
justify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you didn't find any more qualified census tracts besides those few in West Ames, did you?
That's the last confirmation in the extent.
Yeah. I don't think we have. So unless it's something that's geared to a population living in West Ames, you may have that justification issue. You just have to deal with, maybe just assume that we're going to be dealing with that.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, that's just got to be part of the conversation. Are, are you okay if we move next week's meeting to February 1:00 on 2:30?
I'm fine with that, if that works with everybody.
The 20th?
Yes. I have a housing trust fund meeting that I can't believe I didn't notice.
I have 4:00 in Ames, but I can skip it.
Or 1:00?
I can do one.
I could do one, as long as our board meeting doesn't go along that Tuesday, but I can do one.
Wait a second, I'm sorry. I'm okay Tuesday afternoon, it was Wednesday I was looking at, pardon me.
So let's stay with three?
Three, I can do three.
Think that, when you have a board meeting at 10, 1:00 would be fine, but you have some days where you just never know.
Yes.
Okay, so I've got, set down for our next meeting is Tuesday, July 20th at 3:00 P.M. Is there anything else? No? Okay, I mean, we are adjourned for the day.